2018 Finance Committee Meeting to Order at 6:45 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
I move consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $871,939 manual checks in the amount of $4,808 payroll liabilities for 9/13/18 in the amount of $207,573.94 for a total of $1,084,282.33.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that?
I have no questions this evening. It was very well put together.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any other business to come before the committee?
No, Your Honor.
I have none, thank you.
All right, then we are adjourned at 6:46 PM.
I now call the October 2nd, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Councilmember Hancock will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and after that, Councilmember Bailey will offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dearest heavenly Father, thank you for the wonderful opportunities we have to serve as the Riverton City Council. Please bless us in all the things that we do. Please bless that we may make the correct decisions for the city and all of the residents we're in. Please help to keep all of the people that protect us safe, whether they be from the police or the military, and we ask all these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Godey.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present. I would entertain a motion to excuse Sean Peterson from tonight's meeting.
Motion to excuse Sean Peterson from our council meeting.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Councilmember Peterson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I declare that we do have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Communications from the floor. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding the item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening, Jim Davis.
Jim Davis from the Chamber of Commerce. I think my face is pretty well-known around here for numerous reasons, which we won't go into right now. A couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. The first thing was our first annual Roasters Rendezvous was a phenomenal success. We anticipated when we started talking about it that we would be happy if 50 to 100 people showed up. We had 250-plus. Now, it's kind of hard to tell exactly because we didn't keep very good track of the $10 tickets and the $25 tickets. We did have 144 souvenir cups and we only had 20 left, so we had some people that had paid a $10 ticket that came back and gave us the other $15 so they could get the fancy cup. So, they were kind of attractive. But anyhow, it was a rounding success. There's still a few bills out, but we paid almost all of our bills and got a little money left over to do the second annual Roasters Rendezvous. Already realized that we're going to have to incorporate a larger portion of Central Wyoming College to do it because we were really jammed in there. And the other thing that was a kind of a...we hadn't had a rainstorm in two months, and that afternoon it had to plow it up and give us a little squirt of rain. Made everybody duck for cover for about 15 minutes, but it didn't last. But it was a rousing success. People raved about it. The 10 coffee roasters that showed up, mostly all from Wyoming, except for one, did come from Idaho Falls, were just raving about it. They said this is the first time anything like this has ever happened in Wyoming, and they're already looking forward to next year. So, we know it's going to continue to grow and be another successful get-together in Riverton, Wyoming.
Great. Tell us who was involved in getting that pulled together.
Well, I had a committee. John Burberry, who is on my board, Amanda Goddard, who works up at Pitch Engine, Barbara Hodson from the Comfort Inn, and a few others that chipped in to help move things around and what have you. But they were the force that got it started. Actually, Amanda is a brewista, so she kind of knew what to do about coffee roasting, so.
I see.
It was...I know I tried them all and they were all great. Subtle side story, one of...a good friend of mine, who is a coffee addict, got up there and he got so hyped up he had to go to the gym and work out for a while. He got some of it worked off. But he come back. So, who knows? I mean, you know, it's kind of funny. The other thing I wanted to mention was, it is October and Halloween's coming up, and we're going to do Trick or Treat Main Street again. It's always a rousing success. Hopefully the weather kind of holds. It's a few weeks off yet, but there is some candy starting to show up at the chamber already, and we hope to have another successful...I've already talked to Kyle and the chief about what we'll expect to do, which is not going to be any different than we always have, but we're going to do it on Halloween this year instead of moving it to the weekend. So, we got some feedback last year that we had two Halloweens by doing that, so. Anyhow, the downtown group didn't decide they wanted to do another event, what they did last year, so we're going to go ahead and do it on Halloween, so. Kyle?
How far away did the people come for the coffee roast?
It was, you know, I talked to a lot of them. I don't know if whether some of the people that came in that were from out of state really came for that. They were here for another reason, and they heard about it. But I talked to people from Montana and Utah, Colorado. You know, I think that they were already here for visiting or for something else, and then they heard about the, you know, the coffee festival, and so they came to it. Definitely within the state, people came, but we didn't really spread a very far net this first year. So, you know, the land or fly-in was going on that same weekend, so that could have been too. Some people came in for that and then heard about the coffee festival and kind of partook in it. So, it was...
It was cool.
It was great. It really was. I never imagined. I mean, you know, I kind of do my own coffee thing with grinding my own beans and that kind of thing, but I was informed by one of the roasters that those beans are only good for two weeks after you roast them, so. I think maybe that was a come-on, but...
Yeah.
I did buy a $22 bag of coffee from him, so what are you going to do, you know? Anyhow, it was an interesting experience, and I think it really went over way bigger than we anticipated, so.
So, do you have a date for next year?
It'll be the same timeframe, that first week. And now you're taxing my memory. It's been a month or so ago, so it'll be right on that same timeframe. In fact, the committee's already reserved portions of the CWC for that weekend, so.
Okay.
It'll happen.
All right, great.
Okay, any more questions?
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. You bet. Anybody else? Okay. Go ahead.
My name's George Wright, resident of the city here. For your information only, this Saturday at the skate park in our park, my son Matthew's bringing in a professional video photography group, and he's going...they're going to photograph some events there at the park, kind of low-key, but...and interview some of the Native American young people that are pretty good skaters, and take their picture, and do...try to promote skating among the tribes and the various places that the Native Americans hang out. So, that's going on this Friday. There's nothing to do, and we're not going to have a big deal, but for your interest, there'll be something happening at the skate park.
That's Friday?
Saturday.
Saturday. What time? Do you know?
Not exactly. Probably 11 o'clock until through the afternoon.
Okay, we'll see people there with cameras then, and we'll know what's going on. All right?
Right.
Thanks, George.
Okay.
Consent agenda. Would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minute, September 18th, 2018 Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the minutes, October 2nd, 2018 Finance Committee Meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations for October 2nd, 2018.
Are there any items that require further discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Recommendations from the Finance Committee for consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $871,939 manual checks in the amount of $4,808 payroll liabilities for September 13th, 2018 in the amount of $207,573.94 for a total of $1,084,282.33.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Next item is Ordinance Number 18-010, Second Reading, Abandoned Vehicles. Community Development Directors' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. A considerable amount of conversation was generated during the last meeting regarding Ordinance 18-010. Most of the discussion revolved around the definition of screened from public or ordinary public view. For clarity, I've added the definitions from Chapter 10.28. Inoperable vehicle means a motor vehicle which cannot be operated lawfully on a public street or highway within the street or within the state for any reason other than the lack of current vehicle registration or which cannot be moved under its own power. Screened from ordinary public view means in a manner which does not constitute a health hazard, attract children, rodents, or pests, and is located away from public view or screened from ordinary public view by means of a suitable fence, trees, shrubbery, opaque covering, or other appropriate means. Because the title of Ordinance 18-010 specifically denotes changes to Section 10.28.020 only, staff recommends passing the ordinance on second reading. If additional changes are desired to the remainder of the existing code, council may approve specific direction or provide specific direction, and a new ordinance may be presented at a future meeting if you'd like. We have advertised this, and due to the title, it would be very difficult to go back. So, with that, I would answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt...oh, a c. Would the City Clerk please read Ordinance Number 18-010 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 18-010 on second reading. An ordinance amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic to revise Chapter 10.28, Abandoned Vehicles, Section 10.28.020, keeping or parking of vehicles prohibited when, of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective...
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 18-010 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Discussion. So, did I understand this right? What we're actually voting on here is really just the changes that we proposed on the first...
Your Honor, that's correct. Yes, nomenclature changes only referencing the zone names for residential areas.
Okay, so then if we wanted to get into this further with the definitions and that type of thing, we would have to open a different section?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. So, 18-010 is approved on second reading. Ordinance 18-011, Second Reading, Parking of 20-Foot Trailers. Community Development Directors' Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Section 10.16.110 of the Riverton Municipal Code delineates when, where, what size and type of vehicles may park on streets throughout the city. Many of the municipalities in our area have similar verbiage within their codes with lengths generally limited to 20 feet. This is an arbitrary number, however, it does seem consistent with several other cities and towns. In order to provide for consistency to the existing Riverton Municipal Code, staff recommends passage of this ordinance, 18-011, and would gladly take direction on specific items council would like to change. As we have not specified a section, per se, in the title, this could be opened for more discussion and amendments. And with that, I'd answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain...oh, let's see. Would the City Clerk please read Ordinance Number 18-011 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 18-011 on second reading. An ordinance amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic to revise Chapter 10.16, Stopping, Standing, and Parking Generally, Section 10.16.110, Vehicles 20 Feet Long or More Not to Park on Certain Streets at Night, of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 18-011 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
So, we can wade into this one a little bit more, is what you're saying?
Your Honor, that's correct.
Okay. So, we talked last time about the sunup to sundown concept. And I see the reference, and I think I'm not missing it, that whether...what the rationale is in the sunup between sundown and sunup. Any indication of why that is?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Sunup and sundown can be defined by a specific time of day, very similar to hunting regulations or fishing regulations. And so, when you look at sunrise or sunset, that's a very specific time of day, and it changes throughout the year. And it very likely has to do with the amount of light available to see past certain obstacles in the travel ways, so.
I guess I'm...I don't understand why we have a designated time where like...I mean, I suppose visually is the answer, that it only pertains to visibility, that during the day, you can see better. So, yeah, that's...I just wanted a little bit better English and clearer understanding that...because other things don't have nearly that kind of clarity to...that you can only do these things up to sundown, then you can't do them anymore. And it just seems odd to me that we're using that.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Because sunset and sunrise changes throughout the year...
Oh, I get that.
Yeah.
I get that.
That's why...
But why do we...why do we care after sundown? Why...I mean, why don't we just make it, no trailers 24 hours a day? That...I guess that's my ultimate point, is why are we saying no trailers during a certain period of time, but okay, trailers? Why not, if it's an issue for visibility and driving, yeah, you can see a little bit better, but is that the only issue? Sorry.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I'll go back to the memo. These when, where, what time, what place, these are very arbitrary numbers. And so, if council so chooses to direct staff to change that verbiage or to set a more definitive limit or regulation, then I would be happy to add that verbiage for third reading.
Go ahead, Jim.
It seems to me like what we're after is just kind of like the abandoned vehicles, not having it sit there all the time. If you're going to be using the trailer, you're going to be using it during the day. And so, I think if that's what we're after, then I guess the point is, is sundown and sunup doesn't matter that much.
Correct.
You could sit there and have it there be hours. But you also have people that will sit there and work with the trailer, unload it, load it, whatever, because they're moving or something like that, and they're going to do it when it's daylight. So, I guess that's, I think, part of the reason also between the sunup and sundown, is we want to give them the ability to be able to do things with their trailers while it's light, and then not leave them overnight.
Where I live, difference, if you park on Maple, and you park a trailer year-round, that's going to be an obstruction. And in some cases, it's going to be difficult for that individual to back out and see an oncoming piece of...if it's...all the time there. The thing that I see is, it's okay, but what I'm really doing is stealing valuable road from my neighbor's usage. And so, at night, that makes it a butter to find that, especially if your headlights are bad or whatever, in maneuvering or...God help a snow removal. And during the day, that is when you're normally optimizing, packing, leaving, going, and doing. But for storage there on a public area where we have specifically stated residential, if it's in commercial, obviously we don't care, because it's not in an area where you're...
Right.
Where there's traffic, but commercial, it could...who cares? But residential, I'll bet you if I parked in front of people's houses up in West Bend, it would be...on a cul-de-sac, it would be murder.
It just...
Lance?
I guess the heartburn that I have is the arbitrary day...time a day and the arbitrary number of length of vehicle. That...I know it's arbitrary, but that's kind of the problem, is that an 18-foot vehicle can stay there...an 18-foot trailer, travel trailer, can stay there indefinitely, if I'm reading this correctly.
Your Honor, that's correct. And I would point out that the definition of vehicle contained within the 10.16.110, trailer means...oh, I'm sorry. Vehicle means a device in, upon, or by which any person or property may be transported or drawn upon a highway, excluding devices moved by human power or used exclusively upon rails or tracks. So, when we define vehicles for this section only, it not only includes motorized vehicles, but trailers as well, and combinations of trailers and motorized vehicles.
So, on the city street, how long is a parking place?
Your Honor, generally 20 feet.
20 feet. Maybe that's where the 20 feet comes from. You can't take up more than one parking place, you suppose?
Your Honor, that would seem very logical.
Maybe that's...maybe that's it. If you're 24 feet long, you're encroaching on another parking place.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Much of the time when these different codes are written, they tend to line up with each other, so 20 or 21 feet tend...you will tend to do just what you have said. And maybe a little bit more to Councilman Godey's comment. The...we admittedly had said in the past meetings and this one, a lot of these items are arbitrary, largely because they can be fine-tuned for particular communities. For instance, if a community has a great deal of, I don't know, snow machine trailers, because there's a large amount of snow most of the year, they may have some restrictions that, okay, normal people have four of them in their family, and they're this long, et cetera. But as our Community Development Director pointed out, the sundown to sunup, I guess the only thing I'd added was stated that it was about safety some of the time. The sunup to sundown is not only about the use of the actual street parking, just as Councilman Larson said, but one of the -- Councilman Larson said, but one of the things that I had found in past research had been that it was largely about safety. Sunup to sundown usually has to do with the restriction of activity around motor vehicles when it's dark, because if it's 20 feet long, or whatever size is denoted, the concern is that, okay, it gets dark in the winter, there's still kids out, or the like, those kinds of things. So it'd be, while it does seem semi-arbitrary, the sunup to sundown does tend to have, have a purpose, and it's usually more around safety.
Go ahead, Lance.
My last comment is, I've had constituents contact me regarding long-term parking on city streets, and of vehicles larger than a car, less than a 20-foot, and I just, I don't know, it just seems that we may have the opportunity to clean this up a little bit, in ways that cleans up the city, in certain areas where it's not a violation the way it's currently written, and so, you know, tough on you, as a, as a, as a neighbor, that, like, I'm not violating anything, but I'm not sure that's, it's the letter of the law, but it's not the spirit of the law. Safety, visibility, showing, you know, displaying and showing a good neighborhood, and it just, I have some heartburn with 20-foot, and I have heartburn with the sundown to sunup. I understand the points of why they exist, but I have heartburn with those, so.
Go ahead, Tom.
So what are you really saying?
I have heartburn with this.
I understand. When you say, other than, well, a 19-foot, or a 17-foot, are you against perpetual parking on public property in front of somebody's house?
I see a lot of property owners.
That wasn't my question. Are you against it?
At times, I think it's taking advantage of neighbors. That's my concern. So, yeah, there are times in which I'm against it.
It's okay to say yeah.
Because, because it's, there are times in which neighbors take advantage of other neighbors, because they're not violating the letter of the law. But in the spirit of the law, you know, be a good neighbor, and find a different place to park your 19-and-a-half-foot trailer, so that it doesn't take up a full parking spot year-round. So that's my, that is my concern, is that I see some neighbors who find a way to park on their property, not on the street, but on their property, you know, whether it's putting gravel down, paving, just putting it in the back, some, in some way putting it on their property, versus using the city street. And, or they rent a place in the community. I mentioned it a few weeks ago, is, I took it upon myself to store my trailers in a paid place. I supported a business in the community by storing my trailers there. And I, that's granted, that's my decision, and I, you know, I didn't have to. I could have parked both of those vehicles on my, on the city street out in front of my house, according to this, forever. They would not have had to move. They were licensed, so I would not have had to. And I'm not sure that's a good thing to do.
So do you, do you have, Mike?
I guess, I think what, for the most part, what we're against is, or what I guess I would be against, is long-term parking on the street. Okay, which, so whether it's sunup or sundown, or daytime or nighttime, it really comes down to, I don't think we want permanently parked vehicles on the street. It's made for vehicles that are coming and going, whether you work nights or days, I don't think that matters.
Right.
I think it comes down to a, whether you're using that space for more permanent parking, or is it just?
Storage.
If it's storage of your trailer, like you're saying, I don't think we want that on the street. And I think I reflected before that, you know, I think somewhere there is an ordinance that says the vehicle has to be moved within a certain period of time or something, and I didn't look to find out. But I agree, to me, you know, whether the trailer's there a half an hour after sunset or at noon, it's still becoming an obstacle if it's permanently parked in a spot.
Correct.
You got some kind of feel for time limit? 10 days, 14 days?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Our city attorney just informed me that Lander has a five-day turnaround.
I think Casper's a little longer than that, but.
Your Honor?
Tony?
Our current code denotes 72 hours.
72 hours?
Yes. 12, 12, 05, 0 extended parking on streets, covers 72 hours.
So it's already there?
Yes. It is unlawful for any person within the city to place, park, or deposit any object, vehicle, or item upon any street, highway, or thoroughfare within the jurisdiction of the city for a period of more than 72 hours.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
The problem is, that we see at the police department is people will come out after 72 hours, move it afoot, and then leave it another 72 hours, move it back afoot. So there's people that take advantage of that as well.
Have to work pretty hard at that.
Your Honor, they do.
Yes, you do. On both sides of it. Somebody to count how far they moved it, and somebody to decide whether or not it's really rolling stock. My guess is that if it's on jacks, it, it shouldn't be too hard to make that determination. Or flat tires, okay? And I've seen both. So, okay, so if we have, so if we've got a 72-hour rule already in place, that is designed to deal with, with parking, long-term parking, then, does that take care of you, Unless you wanted to get rid of the sunup and sundown? Do you want to move ahead with this and vote on it for second reading, and work on it again next time around?
That would be good.
Okay, or do you want to table it?
No.
Vote on it.
Vote on it.
Vote on it. All right. Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, passes second reading. Okay. Ordinance number 18-012, second reading, hedges and trees. Community Development Directors, report please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Riverton Municipal Code currently does not allow for hedges in excess of 36 inches to be placed within a delineated site triangle at intersections. The site triangle is created by measuring 20 feet from the intersection of lot lines and connecting those lines with a baseline as illustrated in your memo. During discussion at the last meeting, concern was expressed over allowing hedge height to increase to 48 inches. Most design standards that I've seen range between 36 and 48 inches. In order to bring consistency to the Riverton Municipal Code, the fencing height would be allowed to go to 48 inches, as long as it's 50% unobstructed. And that's in conjunction with our fencing regulations that have just been passed. However, it would be left to council to direct staff on height hedge within that site triangle. Ultimately, it would be up to you if we want to remain at 36 inches within the site triangle, or allow it to go to 48 inches. And with that, I'd answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Would the City Clerk please read ordinance 18-012 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 18-012 on second reading. An ordinance amending Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places to revise Chapter 12.20, Obstructions of View at Intersections. Section 12.20.010, Obstructions of View at Street Intersections Prohibited of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 18-012 on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Tim.
Mr. Carr, I just noticed that the recommendation was for the council to reject it. Is that a typo?
My apologies, Your Honor, yes, that is a typo. I would, I would recommend to adopt.
I was just confused.
Reading, I'm sorry.
Because the rest of it seemed to kind of take care of what the concerns were I expressed last time, and so it didn't seem to make sense. Okay. Thank you.
That was a try and attempt, and then a retype.
Any other discussion on this? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and 18-012 passes on second reading. Next item is a public hearing on ordinance numbers 18-013 and 18-014, habitually intoxicated individual. City Administrators, report please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the September, at the September work session, council was introduced to the language forwarded from the Solutions Committee regarding the habitually intoxicated person. The proposed language amends 5.0, I'm sorry, amends Section 5 of the Riverton Municipal, oh, I'm sorry, ordinance 1813 and 1814 are presented for your consideration. 1813 modifies Chapter 9.08, which is offenses against public peace and decency, and 18-014 modifies Title V, dealing with business licenses and regulations, to revise Chapter 5.04. 18-014 would reference, would reference the changes to 9.08120 if passed. So the two do work in conjunction. The suggested modifications at the work session included the manner in which we would post the list publicly. That item was taken back to the Solutions Committee at the meeting immediately following the council meeting. At that time, the Solutions Committee discussed the matter and proposed the language that is provided, or more precisely, had staff proposed, draft the language with their, with what they had provided. That language is provided to you as the only modification since the last time the council saw this language, and it would provide for the posting of the list on the city website. But it would not provide for required posting, or the need to post that in any public place. The Solutions Committee forwarded the item as you see it now, and at the meeting tonight, we have multiple members of the Solutions Committee, including the Chair, the council representatives. In order to further discuss the matter, we also have the city attorney and chief of police present. If you have any particular questions as it revolves around 18-014, business licensing, the City Clerk is also familiar with that language, and has reviewed the document. At this point, we have nothing else to add, and would stand for any questions.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second.
We moved and seconded that we open a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Okay.
Seeing done, Your Honor?
Oh, here she comes.
I'm Trystine Grover, and I'm the Chair for the Solutions Committee, and I would just be here to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you for coming, being here, and being on the Solutions Committee.
I really enjoy it, because it deals a lot with my job, and, and really like, being able to support the community in this aspect, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you tell us, who else is on the Solutions Committee?
Well, I'm the Chair, and then Michelle Wedmeyer, that runs Eagles Hope Transition, is the Director, and she is the co-chair. And then we have a couple of people from, we have Jenny Wildcat from the Northern Rapaoh Tribe, we have Leslie Shakespeare from the Eastern Shoshone Tribe, and then we have numerous people that are doing it as just like a public servant, so Jay Vincent, and then we have, Rebecca came on to our committee as somebody from the community, and now she sits as part of the city council. And then we have, Justin Long is one of our representatives from the liquor license holders, and also I cannot think of his name right now.
Jacob Tyron.
Jacob Tyron, that owns the Roasted Bean, and he's another liquor license holder. So their input is very valuable to us, because then, it does affect them quite a bit with being a liquor license holder. And then the rest of us, I think that we're just involved with the clientele that are going to be affected by this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Ms. Grover?
Thank you very much for seeing me.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say? Want to take part in this?
I think I have something to say, I'm not sure what we're discussing, but I've never had a drink of alcohol, and I don't think I'll start now. And so I'm not sure it affects what I say, except I got seven children, and I've got one girl that, about five years ago, came, was coming from Utah, drank a six-pack of beer between Evanston and Riverton, and got arrested. She spent two months down in the correction center in Lander. When she got out, she swore off, and went to AA meetings very regularly, and has not had a drink since, and is a big wheel in the AA councils, or whatever it is. And I'm proud of her for making that commitment to sobriety, and all I can say personally is that I'm in favor of enforcing the law, whatever it is, and thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Nobody else to speak? The Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and I now declare the public hearing to be closed. Consideration of ordinance 18-013 on first reading. Would the City Clerk please read ordinance 18-013?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 18-013 on first reading. An ordinance amending Title 9 Peace, Morals, and Welfare to revise Chapter 9.08, offenses against public peace and decency. To establish Section 9.08.120, selling, et cetera, of alcohol to declared habitually intoxicated persons, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 18-013 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
And I don't know who to direct this to, but, again, I think this is a really good idea, and moving in the right direction. What would the punishment be for somebody that does sell alcohol to one of these people, or give alcohol to one of these people?
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Tony.
It's a $750, up to, I should say, a $750 fine. That is the maximum, and that would be determined by the judge.
Okay. And does this also give any punishment to the person trying to buy alcohol that's on that list?
Your Honor, no, it does not directly, this particular ordinance doesn't directly deal with that.
Okay. And I guess that's the And I guess that's the only thing I, and I understand that finding one of the people that are doing this probably is irrelevant because they don't have any money or anything to come get, but again, I just philosophically have a problem with the person that's selling them the alcohol get punished worse than the person trying to buy it. But maybe taking them, putting them on a list so they can't buy, I think that is a positive, but I think there should be punishment on both sides at least, not just one side of that transaction.
Kyle?
How do we generate who distributes it and how often does it change?
Your Honor, the item is generated monthly by the police department based on the convictions in the month, and then it is distributed by the city through the police department or by other means internally. If we find one way or the other that is, works a little better in distribution, however, we do have to deliver that, and there has to be the, part of the burden of proof is making sure that they were informed, so we have to make sure that we provide that.
Okay, thank you. Lance?
You know, as a member of the Solutions Committee and helping create this, I, there was a lot of feedback by some members as well as community members that this isn't going to fix anything, that this isn't going to be the solution. And, you know, I think we were fairly honest in saying, you're right by itself, it will not. The reality is, is there are multiple things that we have to do to make changes in this area, and we kind of just almost have to do them one at a time to the next one, to the next one, to the next one, and so on. And I hope the community understands that we don't expect this to be a magic bullet, but we need to do things like this to make some changes. We've, that's the hope, I think, of the Solutions Committee is to continue to try things to see if they'll work, and if they work, we're going to keep them and do more. If they don't work, we'll find something different to do and move on and keep trying new things.
Go ahead, Kyle.
You know, you're probably right there. There's a story of a person walking on the beach. As he walks along, he picks up a starfish and throws it into the ocean. Another passerby sees him and says, well, that doesn't do any good. And the answer from the person that threw the starfish, it does to that starfish. So when you say it doesn't help anything, it does help one at a time, and that's what we're trying to effect.
I agree. Absolutely.
Go ahead, Tim.
Mr. Solers, I was curious, in terms of disparate impact, I guess is kind of what I'm thinking of, if there were some sort of an equal protection claim or something about this, have you given any thought to that in terms of, I guess, what sort of liability we might end up with as the city?
That issue has been raised, but, I mean, everybody has the potential to be placed on the list if they have the six convictions, and then, once they're on the list, everybody is treated equally. So I understand that in the end, somebody may, may claim that it targets a certain segment of the population, but what it's really designed to do is to target the population that can't control themselves with drinking to the point that they have multiple public intoxication. That's the segment that we're trying to target. The end result may or may not be that a certain segment, you know, is the recipients of this, but at least on its face and in intent, it's meant to treat anybody who has this type of drinking problem, that they have six public intoxis in a six-month period, that we try to limit their availability to alcohol.
And I mean, very objectively as well. I mean, we're not saying that there's a subjective decision here. We're specifically delineating out what kind of offenses can get you on this list.
Yes.
There's not going to be any sort of judgment call. It's just going to be if you have that many, you're on the list.
If you have that many, absolutely. And if you think one of those is, one of the six is, for some reason, maybe you pled or were convicted of a crime that wasn't a public intox, you did something else, then there is an appeal mechanism built in here where you can challenge being put on that list. But, I mean, it's meant to be neutral in intent to address the problem of chronically habitual persons who continually get intoxicated and arrested.
The other question I had, if I can, Your Honor, in looking at this also, I saw some feedback, I tried to find it and I couldn't find it, where somebody was talking about the idea of this being, whether we would want to do this with something besides municipal ordinance violations. And I guess the reality is, I think part of the reason why we were wanting to limit this to offenses through the municipal court was, they already have plenty of, I mean, if we start to get into state law violations, like intoxicated pedestrian or something like that, we're going to be making this a much broader population.
And I would agree with that. The intoxicated pedestrian is prosecuted through the circuit court. You know, you could have a person who maybe has been cited in Lander or Hudson or Pavilion numerous times under their town code, and they come here and they have one conviction. The only convictions we're counting are just those through the Riverton Municipal Court. And again, I think it's somewhat, I don't know, too, because it's all self-reported, self-regulated, we have access to all of those. We're not going to treat the person who has six in Riverton. Well, I was going to say any differently, but I don't think there is a difference. We're counting our court convictions only.
And it's a lot easier for us to keep track of it in-house. If they're all being prosecuted here, it's easy to get the reports, easy to be able to see the convictions and everything, too.
Well, and additionally, it's a city ordinance, and these types of people, the persons who have these types of convictions are having a direct impact on the citizens of Riverton, either through just behavior or through monetary effects that the city goes through.
Mike?
So, I understand the ease of keeping track as compared to us having to follow state convictions or whatever, but that does put us in a position where now, if one of the police officers gives them a ticket for intoxicated pedestrian, that doesn't count toward that?
It would not count on this. It's only city of Riverton Municipal Court convictions.
So I can have two DUIs and two intoxicated pedestrians and two public intoxis, and I'm fine still?
Well, you would not be on the list.
Not that I would be fine, but.
Who needs some help?
Yeah. Well, and I guess that, my point is, the quicker we get them on the list to not be able to purchase, the better off we're all going to be, because, you know, the person intoxicated in the park, for example, is just as much of a danger to society as the one on the sidewalk, as the one, and maybe even more important, is the one that's driving. And again, I think we have some of those that are probably a mix of all of those. I understand the difference in being able to handle it and track it and all of that kind of stuff.
I guess I've got some, so I guess I have a little concern there, that if we do have people that we're routinely arresting for other charges other than public intoxication in the city code, and some of those may turn out to go under state law instead of city code, I'm not worried about missing something, if you see what I mean. In other words, if we overlook the DUI in Lander or Rock Springs or something like that in counting the six, and we still had six.
Well.
Okay, that wouldn't be a big deal. And if we had, and, I mean, as long as we had six, the fact that we'd missed a couple in other jurisdictions only meant that the guy didn't get on the list quite as fast.
And, Mr. Mayor, I think part of it also is discoverability. If you have a DUI, that goes against your driver's license, it can be looked up. But if you have a couple of public intoxis in Rock Springs, our municipal court's not going to know about it.
That's right.
It's not reported anywhere other than in Rock Springs' records.
Yeah, but that's still a solution. He wasn't drunk in our area.
Okay. Tim?
And I think one of the things people have to realize, too, with DUIs, if that's being prosecuted through the circuit court, I mean, generally, if that's someone who is, does have a history, that's being addressed with the court. That's something where there's either going to be a higher bond that's going to be required of them. The judge has been putting people on a 24/7 sobriety program where they're having to get breath testing. So, I mean, I think people sometimes see that, you know, this person has had like seven DUIs or something. That really, for the most part, is not, let me think of how to put this. You're not going to generally get somebody who has their seventh DUI who's going to be out of jail around here, and in the state of Wyoming, frankly, at least in the 10-year period, let's put it that way. I mean, because some people, you know, if it goes beyond the 10-year period, then that's a bit different story, but, so I think to a certain extent, we have to realize there's other stuff going on here. I think this is specifically meant to address the people that we are seeing in public on a regular basis, whether it's in the park or elsewhere. They are becoming a nuisance to others, they're harassing folks, they're drunk, they're falling down in front of you. I mean, this happens, and it happens plenty in our community, and when it does happen, they're being arrested, they're being charged with public intoxication. And so I think really, and I guess the point is, Chief, where are we at with the number that would be on this list today?
Go ahead.
Your Honor, I don't have the specific numbers, but I feel very comfortable that we would have at least 15 to 20 people on this list. Some of those would have 20, 25, 30 public intoxis within a six-month period.
And I'll bet you, almost every single one of those, if people follow the police blotter, they could probably name them, because you'll see them on the police blotter on a regular basis. So I think the reality is, that's what we're trying to capture. There's other parts of the system that are capturing other things, like the DUIs and that sort of thing, and I think we have to just trust that to do its job. But this is really a unique way that we can try to figure out cutting off the supply for these folks.
Ready? On first reading, all in favor of ordinance eighteen dash zero one four, by title only? Oh, sorry. Eighteen dash zero one four. Say aye.
One, three. Three.
Oh, we're on three, I'm sorry. See, I jumped ahead of you. Okay, so we're looking at three right now. Eighteen dash zero one three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. Now, we're going to go to eighteen dash zero one four. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number eighteen dash zero one four by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number eighteen dash zero one four in first reading, and ordinance amending title five, business licenses and regulations, to revise chapter five point zero four, alcoholic beverages, to revise section five point zero four point zero four zero, sale et cetera to habitual drunkard, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance eighteen dash zero one four on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
So is there any discussion on that? Or did we get it all wrapped up in the first one? Go ahead, Tim.
I know we had talked about, and I was in the middle of looking something up when you had answered this question, so if you've answered this, you could tell me I should have done better at listening. We talked a little bit about how this list is going to get distributed and everything. We had talked, I mean, if we're going to be expecting individuals to not be selling or giving to anybody on this list, were we intending to have this on the website?
Your Honor, yes.
Go ahead.
Within the document, the modification that we have would be to have it on our website. Additionally, we have discussed at length, I know at the work session, that there will be an implementation timeline. It's, our police department and the city needs to be, needs to work with the liquor license holders in order to implement this program. We're all learning a little bit as it goes. We're going to have, find some hiccups, and we're going to find some good ways to do things. So, yes, it will be on the website, and yes, we will be working with the liquor license holders on the onset. It won't be an immediate, as the chief has pointed out, it won't be an immediate heavy hammer. That would be our intent.
And I'm going to pretend like I had read that and that I heard you, and I just said that for the listening public. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eighteen dash zero one four is passed on first reading. Hey, council committee reports and council member roundtable. So, Rebecca, have you got anything for us tonight?
Not a whole lot, Your Honor. We had our parks committee and our solutions committee meeting both pushed back to the two weeks from the date they were regularly scheduled due to just people are busy this time of year, so we had to reschedule due to the lack of attendance. But however, regardless of, we have meetings or not, as far as the parks committee goes, we're pretty active as a group off meeting time, so we're still brainstorming ideas to bring people into the parks. We're still doing our weekly park selfie, so we take a picture of a local park in town and then have somebody, you have to go and take a selfie in the park and tag which park that it's in, and then we do a prize giveaway once a week, so, and it has brought a lot of people into the parks and bringing a lot of attention to the City of Riverton Facebook page as well. But other than that, I don't have a whole lot going on, Your Honor.
Good, thank you. Kyle?
Yes, Your Honor. First, I want to say yay for the coffee. That's a brainstorm of, are people willing to work towards a goal of helping Riverton? Second item I want to talk about is, last night I attended the. Second item I want to talk about is last night I attended the, at CWC, they had a Save Our Hospital meeting. We had Mayor Vincent previously spoke. We had a man by the name of White speak. We had a, an operator from Douglas who operates a private hospital, not for profit, but it's owned by the community. And in, listening to Mayor Vincent, he brought forth a presentation which found its way to his back door. So it wasn't an authorized copy from Sage West, but it explained Sage West's position on Riverton Hospital and how they were going to deal with Riverton. It was not very positive, and I came away quite angry. I'm sorry for the way people deal with money. Mike has often told me about how people will drive several blocks or a mile to save a doll, or to save a penny on a gallon of gas, but I've never seen corporate America do what they've done. And so I was disheartened and genuinely just downright angry with Sage West and the way they are dealing with the situation. It was also stated that the city council needs to give a free hand to our city administrator who is going to become the mediator between Sage West and Riverton Community. And I'm really happy that Tony has accepted that responsibility with our backing. And, but I'm under no false pretense that I don't think it's going to bring a lot of fruition. I would love that it would, but after last night's meeting and the bringing forth of the data that was presented, it's pretty difficult to understand how they can change their course when their plans have been made since 2006, and I was told earlier that it was probably 2002. So, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. That does bring us to something that I think this, the mediation that Tony's been involved in is starting to take quite a little bit of time. And, and so I just, I would like the council to be able to nod their head, yes or no, that we're okay with him pursuing that and, and making that effort on, on behalf of the city council to, to do that. I know Mike attends these meetings and, and I do, and, but Tony's the one that actually is spending hours getting ready for the meeting. Okay? And then trying to recover after it. Okay? And so, and so I, I just don't want the council to go into this thinking that, that, you know, we're not putting forth, you know, a lot of resources to try to make this work. So, is everybody okay with that?
For, Your Honor. I think for the time being, I think it's appropriate where they're currently at in the discussions, but I, I suggest in weeks from now, maybe even months, to readdress it, of course, but for right now, I think it's necessary.
Okay, all right. For a couple of months, or a little longer?
Didn't we vote on this?
No, I don't, I.
Did cable it?
We had a, we had a resolution a couple of weeks ago, and we just kind of pulled it, we didn't, we didn't consider that, but, but that wasn't, that, this is only part of that. Okay, so what I'm concerned about is that we make sure that Tony is adequately empowered to, to function.
Maybe we need to ask Tony.
Maybe Tony doesn't want.
We're talking about him in third person like he's.
Maybe Tony, maybe Tony doesn't want to do it, huh?
Your, Your Honor, I'm, I'm more than happy to do it. It's, I, I wouldn't say it's an enjoyable item, but it's, it's a challenging item. And I, and I do believe that it's very important for our community to try every avenue that we can. There was a lot of discussion, I've been, I've been to every single meeting, every public one, and I'm pretty sure every private one at this point too, that I can think of, but I, I, I do want to do this. I do want to try. If it doesn't work, that, then that's fine. I do agree with Councilwoman Schatz that at some point, if council feels that we're not getting anywhere, it does take time. And it's important that council does understand that, but I do believe it's important. And everybody has, both of the groups that I've worked with have been very responsive to me and, and been willing to sit and talk about it at this point. So, I know we have a meeting coming up this week, and that'll probably be quite telling. So, I'm happy to do it, and I would like to do it if council is comfortable with it. If at any time council feels that, you know, maybe we should not be extend, extending this particular resource, I'd be more than happy to step aside.
Your Honor, it's Resolution 1380, Resolution Supporting Healthcare Services in Riverton.
Yeah, we had that, we didn't have it on the agenda.
No, we don't. It was on, it was on last month's agenda.
It was.
And it was basically, now therefore be it resolved that the government body of the City of Riverton advocates for the preservation and advancement of healthcare services throughout Riverton Community, especially those services traditionally available to hospital settings. So, I think that would cover Tony's absence, but, you know.
I move we approve of Tony's role that he's taken with the city, with the Save Our Hospital Group and with Sage West, and just continue to have him work in that capacity for the time being.
Second.
Moving second, any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Mike, have you got anything for us tonight?
Um, I don't. I, I apologize, I had to miss quite a few meetings this last few weeks. I was out of town for a software training, and then I was in town a little bit, and then I was out of town last week for my daughter's wedding in California, so it was a very enjoyable experience. And.
Did you fly Rivers?
I drove. And with my two in-laws, my son and his wife, their three little children, and my wife. We, we had a nice trip down to California. I thoroughly enjoyed leaving the six lanes of bumper-to-bumper traffic in California on the way back out very much. Makes driving in Riverton just seem like a breeze now. It was good, yeah, so.
What a blessing, huh?
Yes, what a blessing. So it is a wonderful thing to be able to live in Riverton, Wyoming, so we had a good time. And again, I look forward to serving on the hospital board and the committee that we've formed, and again, Tony's been doing a fabulous job in sort of mediating those discussions and keeping people relatively under control. And again, it's a, it's an emotional, you know, heartfelt issue that everybody feels like they have a stake in, and I think it's to all of our best interest to try to be productive in that and keep it positive and keep the best healthcare we can in Riverton and Fremont County and do the best that we can do. And it's, it's a slow, you know, one bite at a time to eat the elephant kind of a process, and so, you know, there's nothing going to happen really quick, but we have to keep moving in the right direction, and, and I think we've worked on getting that accomplished, so, thank you.
Tim?
I had the opportunity to meet with the Senior Citizens Endowment Board. Since our last meeting, it was a good meeting, a lot of good people there, we talked about...
It's just mice, don't worry about it.
Big mice.
We talked about the, the corpus of the fund and just different ways that we can help that increase. We were talking about different investment options that we can explore. Up until now, I think the idea has been to have it be in a form that it could be taken out at any time, which I get that in terms of wanting to have emergency access to it, but we did discuss the possibility of having that being in, in a form that maybe would still be fairly liquid, but would be having a much higher rate of return. And they were very excited about that, wanted us to get started on it right away. I think we're actually going to have an earlier meeting than we would normally have to try to discuss it. And Mia's been looking into some options that I think will be good for the, for the Senior Citizen Center, so.
Cool.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Lance?
Yes, Your Honor. We had a pretty short School District 25 Rec. Board meeting last night, just paid a few bills, and we had only met two weeks ago because of a rescheduled September meeting, so there really wasn't a, a ton to discuss. And I just, I guess to add my two cents regarding the meeting from last night, the hospital meeting, I definitely came away from that with, you know, some glimmers of positive. I think the committee that was on the stand, or on the stage, and the community members, I think as a whole, we're, we're looking for opportunities to move forward and be positive that this can be done in some way, shape, or form. Whatever that is, is still yet to be determined, but I appreciate the fact that we're looking at moving forward, as, as Mike indicated, and, and I think we've got to do that, otherwise we get stuck and then it just gets deeper and deeper. So, I look forward to moving that forward. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. City Administrators, report?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have spent a little bit of time on the hospital item. I'll just move on from that. I do appreciate the support and the involvement of everyone, including the citizens who go to the meetings and make their voices heard at all times, and that's, and that is appreciated, it really is. We have a forced meeting next Monday. And, so that'll be at 10, 10? Sorry, 11. 11 a.m. on Monday. The other item that I kind of wanted to bring council up to speed on is an agreement that we have going with Job Corps right now. Obviously, we've worked with Job Corps a great deal in the past, they were instrumental in the demolition of our, associated with the splash pad, but now we're also working with them, and we have two of their interns working for the city. One is in the police department, and one of them is over in community development. They've been here a week. They're highly, highly efficient. All I hear all the time is how, how good they do for us, and we are very appreciative of that. So I just kind of wanted to publicly thank Job Corps and those particular students for their work for the city. We know that we had reductions this last year, and that, and everybody has done a great job of tightening their belt and making things work. Things like code enforcement. We have put up improved numbers compared to last year in spite of absences and in spite of a different staffing level. So this can only help us move forward. I would also, it's also notable, notable that this is an ongoing item, while these individuals will be here between six and eight weeks, the idea is to rotate others in as they are both available and needed, and we can usually find things for people to do because we have a lot going on. So, that's been very much appreciated. And in the same vein, I had a meeting, and I'm trying, was it, I think it was CES at one time, and we ended up having a, a discussion, and there was, there were a couple options for work-study programs through some of the different organizations within our community. I mean, up at the high school, they have what is called the ideal program. We have another employee now that works with the city that is through that program that works a few hours a week, and works, again, over in community development, working on many of those programs, works with Eric. He started, I believe this last week, correct?
Correct.
And that, that program reimburses the city for any expenditures. So this individual is an employee. So you'll see that our line is probably higher than it was planned, however, that is completely reimbursable. So, while you'll see an increase in expenditure, you see the increase in revenue too. And we're incredibly happy to have Reed on, on staff, really looking forward to his continued work with us, so we appreciate that. And the last thing, I guess I'd point out is there are a number of public events that we've been talking about through, Councilwoman Schatz has talked about them a couple different times, but we're talking about them with the Parks Committee and has mentioned, and has worked with the Solutions Committee. So we're looking forward, I know I'm looking forward to having that conversation at length, and one of the things that council asked is that we talk about events, that's within your council goals. And I, and I honestly think that we have some really good ones coming forward. I don't want to spoil the surprise on some of them because I think they're pretty neat, but we look forward to bringing those to you in the very near future. That is all that I have at this point, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions for Tony? Okay. Let me, let me talk about domestic violence awareness for just a minute. See my nice shirt? If you want a purple shirt, okay? Or a purple tie, you know, or something purple, there's actually online the Purple Store. And everything in the store is this color. Okay? It's, it's, and there's everything, there's all kinds of stuff, the Purple Store, okay? So you can look that up. Well, how that color purple got picked for domestic violence awareness, I don't know, but at any rate, I like my purple shirt. So here's a fundraiser, the Second Annual Purple Ball is going to be October the 20th of 2018 at the Riverton Holiday Inn, and it starts at 5:00 p.m. Tickets are $35 a person, and there's live auction and a silent auction, orders, cash bar, and music by a band. And so it should be fun to go and dance and participate in the activities that they have that evening and raise money for a good cause. And this year, the Fremont County Alliance for Domestic Violence is partnering with the Shoshone Tribe, and so a lot of their activities this month will be out toward Fort Washeke, the Shoshone Rose Casino and so forth. And, and there's a big goings-on there at the Shoshone Rose where anybody that goes, I guess, gets free Mexican food. Okay, they're going to have a big feed, so. At any rate, that's something to participate in. I was able to attend the hospital meeting last night and, and found the presentations there really quite interesting. I think there's a lot of people, good people, who are really concerned about this issue in our, in our community, and, and I hope that what we're trying to do here at the city is going to be productive in that regard. It just strikes me that, that, you know, I keep looking at that, that it just, if you can go back five years ago, or six, and see that before the hospitals were merged, that Riverton was a profitable operation. Okay? I just, I'm not sure why it can't be anymore. So. It looks to me like there's a lot of folks that just think, well, if I have to drive the Lander, I'm already in the car, I, I could just pick a different direction. And, and I'll go someplace else to get services. I don't know, that's, that's kind of a, kind of a difficult thing. Sage, Sage West, of course, is a private company. They don't have to, they really don't have to cooperate with us very much at all. You know, if you think about the power that the City of Riverton has over them, okay? It's that we can turn off their water when they don't pay their bill. You know? That's about it. And, and there was a time when we were so excited, okay, to get rid of the cumbersome bureaucracy of the county hospital board. Okay? Because a private corporation would be able to be more efficient and, and supply services in a, in a better manner and, you know, that kind of free enterprise model. And, and so today, that hasn't worked out very good, and I, I guess my concern, and maybe Mike will get into some of this as he works with the board, maybe try to have some understanding of this, but it just seems to me like some of what we're seeing here is a result of... is a result of changes in the whole picture of healthcare in the United States. So I think there's a lot of things that go on behind the curtain that we don't appreciate, and very difficult sometimes to deal with, and lots of, lots of rules. Just, you know, there's all kinds of rules that everybody has to follow. So I'm hopeful that our effort here will be useful in building the hospital back up again. I, I really, my, I guess my sense is, is that, is that LifePoint has underestimated the public relations issue that they face, and they may need to, they may need to rethink what they've been doing, the direction they've been traveling. I hope that we'll be able to work with that. You know, we've worked with Alan Doherty on a number of different issues, and I think I've been able to establish a relationship with him where we can call each other on the phone and talk, at least, that type of thing. But this working group that we've put together has really, I think, made a difference. And, and so now the step is, that, in that resolution that we didn't discuss, we said that we recognize Sage West for their efforts and, and that their, their commitment to restore twenty-four-seven surgery, and, and then that allows an upgrade on the ER, is, is a great first step. And I don't mean that to say that that's a step going to a hospital that looks like the hospital in Casper. That's not what I'm talking about. But it took many years of decline to get to where we're at, and it's going to take some years to get back up, but there should be, we ought to be able to put together a plan that says, here are the things that we have to do in order to have twenty-four-seven surgery. This is, these are the people we need. These are the facilities that we need. This is the equipment that we need. This is, this is what we have to put together in order to make that work. And then you've got a checklist. You can say, number one is done, number two is done, number three is done. And then pretty soon, you've got a timeline. You can say, this is when we'll go active on that particular part of it. So I think if, if we can get some kind of commitment from that standpoint that's subjective, measurable, time-bound, then we can make real progress in, in rebuilding what we have available to us here in, in, in Riverton. That's, so I'm glad that, that Tony is putting in a lot of time on this, and I've put in some time on it, okay? And, you know, there's a lot of resources in the state that work on that. The Department of Health has a huge, you know, permitting program for healthcare providers. The, the hospital has to basically hire third-party certifying agencies to come and certify every element of their program in order to make it functional and, and, and show that on a regular basis it meets standards. And, and so I, I think there's, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of steps to take. I talked with a guy, Eric Bowley, who is the executive director of the Wyoming Hospital Association. Nice guy and a ton of information. He could talk about, he could talk about the Thermopolis effort last year to establish a, a, a special district for healthcare in Hot Springs County, and the steps that they went through to do that, and how much money that would generate, and how that would work, and it could very well be that our community needs to be involved in something like that as a way to, what, partner? If we've got services in Riverton that we would like to have, maybe we have to pay something for that. And there's a way to generate some funds that might help to do that. So I, I think there's a lot of options that we have laying out ahead of us, and it's just that I can't, I can't see a timeline on it yet. Okay? So.
So, your honor.
Go ahead.
So on September ninth, there was Sage West printed a statement that they were going to rebuild surgical services, and what you're really stating is, that's great, but let's see a timeline. Let's see some crosses made off where, where your progress is during that period of time.
Well, I think that's, I think that's, that's interesting. You know, my wife is a registered nurse, okay? And, and in any nursing plan, okay? So this applies to hospital, should at least, shouldn't it? In any nursing plan, you've got objective goals that are measurable in some way and are time-bound to measure progress.
So that's what we want.
So that's, that's easy to, I, I just think, I just think it, you know, there isn't anybody around this table here that's a hospital administrator. Okay? You know, we simply are not experts at that.
I don't know, Tim might have a background in it.
You know? But we do have, we do have people around us that can provide that kind of information, you know? And if we work with them, I think that's what's going to happen. I, I'll tell you, I, I wasn't able to attend the last, the last working group meeting, but I listened in on the phone while that meeting was underway, and, and I, and I came away from that with a very positive, very positive feeling. Okay? I think that there were some people there who were really interested in making it work. Don't, is that? Mike? Okay. I, I think that there were a lot of people there that really wanted it to work, and so we are, I, I think, started down a pretty good path. So, thank you. Anything else? Anybody who's got anything else? I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Eight thirty-one.